Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manasha Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Oh, yes.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenek.
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is the Report of Department Heads, Staff and Consultants. We have the minutes and communications to receive. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I'll move that we approve Minutes A through H and Communications I through L.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak, if you could step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Deanna Lean and this is my daughter Alexis. We live at 878 Third Street in Manasha. And the reason we're here tonight is Alexis has made the U.S. Luge Team. So she will be leaving to go to Lake Placid December 18th. So in front of you, you'll see an order form. We are having a fundraiser for her. We're selling T-shirts. We do have some corporate sponsors already that are sponsoring her. So we were just looking to see the City of Manasha would get behind her and send her to New York.
Well, congratulations. She's shy hiding behind.
So in December, she'll do her three qualifying runs on the main ice at Lake Placid. And then from there, she will go on to do her Olympic journey. So any support that we can give would be greatly appreciated. If you would like to order a T-shirt, if you want to take down my address, it's 878 Third Street. And you can just drop the order forms off there. And the shirts will be returned right around the first week of December. And I know her school, she attends St. Mary's Middle School. So the 17th of December, the day she leaves, they're going to be doing a shirt day for her to send her off. So any support we can get would be greatly appreciated.
Great. We'll put some around City Hall, too, to help promote it for you as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have eight items this evening. The minutes to approve from the Common Council Meeting of October 7th. The Board of Public Works' recommendations for the payment to MCC for the street construction To accept the DOT 2020-2025 STP Urban Grant for the reconstruction of Racine Street. The street use application for Hometown Halloween this Thursday. To purchase a new L90H wheel loader from Airing Equipment for the cost of $169,450. A change order to MCC for the new street construction and reconstruction. It's an add of $42,548.25. The Park and Recreation Board recommendations from November, a month ahead, October 8th, to increase the Marina seasonal slip rental for 2020. And the Plan Commission recommendation for approval of the preliminary plat for the third addition to Woodland Hills. Is there any that anyone wishes to have separated this evening? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. One, the payment to MCCI, Inc. Item number three, the Wisconsin DOT Urban Grant. Number five, the purchase of the L90H wheel loader. Item six, the change order to MCCI, Inc. And item eight from the Planning Commission's recommendation for the preliminary plat review.
Any others? So do we have a motion for Items 1, 4 and 7 at this point? Alderman Sevenek?
If there are no others, I'll move for the approval of Items 1, which is the Common Council. 4, the street use application for Halloween, for the Hometown Halloween on October 24th from 3 to 7. And the Park and Recs recommendation for the Marina slip rental increase.
It's a motion and a second. If we could have a roll call vote, please. Do we have a motion for Item 2? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the payment to MMC Incorporated Contract Unit Number 2019-04 for new street construction and reconstruction of various locations in a amount of $107,575.77, payment number 1.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Langdon. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to accept the Wisconsin DOT 2020-2025 STP Urban Grant for the reconstruction of Racine Street with a 72-28 split in the approximate amount of $3,713,483.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Langdon. Alderman Taylor?
We had some discussion on this and you were going back to the meeting to talk to them. And can you give us a little background?
Here's what I can tell you is I did reach out to Ms. Carpenter from the DOT and I did talk to Ms. Kramer Badkey from East Central Wisconsin Planning. What I explained to you the other night is pretty much how it works. The federal funds go to the state. The state divvies it up by statute or guidelines. And it's based generally on population and then they split it between rural and urban areas. We fall under the urban areas and then the money is divvied out through the MPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization. We're part of the Fox Cities MPO. They have the right to this committee to either fund a maximum of 80% or a minimum of 50%. As far as appealing it, we would have to decline this, go back to committee, the MPO Committee and as a group revisit our, I guess, unwillingness to accept that 78% funding level. And then they'd have to sort of revote. Those four projects that were selected, again, the intent was to try and keep all that 17.8, 17.9 million in the Fox Valley and they could fund those four projects by divvying it up a little bit. There really is no appeal process through the DOT. I know we had talked about the concerns with the traffic volume on Racine Street. What I was informed was that they did, traffic counts are part of some criteria, empirical data that's used to help rank the street projects. So I guess in a roundabout way, the increased volume did reflect in our score, which made sure that we were one of the four projects that were considered and then ultimately selected by this, this group, the committee, the MPO Committee, so.
Are they sensitive to the fact that Racine Street was used for many of the detours?
That's, again, the really, again, she indicated that there really is no other appeal process other than going through the MPO. They kind of washed their hands of that. Again, I shared the concerns that were expressed in regards to the amount of wear and tear traffic volume and what do we get for it in return? And that's, the comment I got was, well, the traffic counts were part of, were done during this period of time, which there was obviously increased traffic on the street, which then improved our score, enabling us to get the funding, so.
You said 78%. It's 72%, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Okay, well, I thought maybe you got...
No, no. And just so you all are aware then, too, there is an outside chance that one of these four projects, one of the other three projects doesn't go. It's possible that we could be funded up to the 80% if money is given back. That's sort of how we got the funding for Broad Street here this past year, is that I believe Kakona had originally accepted the grant and then in turn, for whatever reason, decided not to. So then the money became available, goes back into the pool. So it's possible we could get it funded at 80%, but at this point in time, the thought was not and that's what the committee voted for.
This creative split they have, 72-28, since the 90s, I've been up here and I've always seen an 80-20 split. And is this just some creative financing or is this to get more projects?
Again, what it was is the discussion that was on the floor at the time was, is okay, we can't, there was like five or six projects that ranked high enough to be considered. And the dollar amounts were there, so obviously people were doing the math and felt as though that those four projects were worthy of being done. If we stayed with the 80-20, you know, split, one of the four projects would not get the funding. And in that case, several millions of dollars would go back to the state to be reallocated somewhere else outside of this region more than likely. And that's the decision that was made to try and keep all that money there. We brought it back to you guys to see if you guys would accept that, that funding level in order to keep it in the valley, the full 17.8, 17.9. And again, when we did our math, as far as if we didn't accept this, the out-of-pocket to the city, if we don't go through with this, accepting these funds would be significantly higher in order to get Racine Street done, so.
Okay. Any chance of that being moved up besides 2024?
Probably not. That would be the earliest. Right now, it's set for 2025, but we could possibly get 2024. In light of some of the discussion that we had here at last council meeting and the operations budget, you'll see that we did put some money in there to do a mill and overlay on Racine Street to get us through, so.
Okay, great. Okay, great. That was my next question, thank you. And the MPO, do we have a voice on that?
We do. We're a voting member there. I'd be lying to you if I told you who was all there. Who are all members, but I can certainly dig that up. I did not bring that with me this evening, but communities that were there, obviously Wauwah County, Otagamie County, Kelly Mac County, Appleton, Fox Crossings, Buchanan, Harrison, Little Shoot, Kakona. I mean, it's pretty much the Fox Cities are represented there.
In this document, it says the Appleton and then in parentheses, Fox Cities. Is that what it's really called?
That's what I have seen, yes.
Okay. And you think this is a trend? I mean, are they going to crack this down to, let's say, the next ball of money while we get five projects in here? So now you're going to get 64%?
There again, though, it's going to be up to that organization, that committee that votes on that. And there was some discussion at that time. There comes a point in which it's not feasible to take on a DOT project because of the engineering, the oversight, everything that goes into it, what's required. And truth be told, I think that everyone was kind of, we all did our math after we left to sort of see, does it make sense, you know, at that threshold? So I'd like to think not, because there were others there that, you know, we had that discussion that, you know, 80-20 has been standard. If you start getting too, you know, you start cutting away too much of that funding, then it becomes, you know, counterproductive or it's not effective for us to take on those types of projects. So I'd like to think not. And then as far as funding, just so you're aware, there is additional funding that the DOT made us aware of about, you know, a month ago. It's due December 10th, so we have to take a look at that and see if there are other projects that we could certainly apply for, so.
Thanks for your very clear explanation on this matter. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. You did answer one of my questions about the number of projects, but now I'm confused after his question. It sounded to me as though we were only going to have, it was going to be determined by four projects. And like you had stated, last time around, Kakona backed out, we were able to receive additional monies. And you did just say that there was only four projects and we could go to the 80-20 split if maybe one of the other ones backed out. But now you're talking, is there still a possibility of a fifth?
No.
Oh, okay. So it is just the four?
Correct.
So that's straightened out?
Yep.
I use that as a hypothetical.
Oh, okay. And then you mentioned a little bit about an overlay. My concern is, is that, you know, this isn't till 2025 and it's not going to survive that long. So what's the plan down the road in the meantime?
Again, what we were looking at doing is next year, do a mill and overlay. So we'd take some of the surface off.
Okay.
And then come back in like we did up by the high school about three, four years ago.
Right.
And put down...
Actually, it was further down.
Two inches of asphalt over the top of that. You're going to get some reflection cracking coming through, but obviously the...
You're saying the whole strip up to 8th Street?
Not necessarily the whole strip, but we'll have to do a little bit more math, but we were able to put about $40,000 into the budget for that.
Okay, all right.
We'll have to obviously take a walk once and take a look and see what areas are in dire need of it. But we do plan to do something to try and get us to 2024 and 2025.
Okay, that sounds great. Hopefully, oh, and then the last thing was, is I was wondering, why do I have approval written here? Is there a guarantee that the state can't, they're not going to back out in any kind of way? Like, let's say this all gets going and then 2025 rolls around, they say, no, we don't have the money anymore.
Well, nobody...
Is there like a signed document next year where, yes, this is going to happen?
February.
So we can, so we can budget and everything?
Correct, correct, February.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. Adam, one other question as far as you're doing such a great job answering questions today. Are we going to, with that money, is the railroad tracks also going to be fixed?
Yes. As you see a little bit later, there is a resolution that East Central and the DOT would like from us. And one of the items in there does reference the fact that, that the railroad tracks are to be done. And yes, they are planned to be done.
So the street and the railroad tracks, 2025 should all be done?
Correct. However, as far as the tracks go, if you guys recall, we were directed to petition the Commissioner of Railroads, which, which we have done. Racine Street is in, in that petition. I would, that just happened recently. So it's very possible that at least what's in there right of way might get done sooner, just so you're aware. But, but obviously coordinating with the railroads is part of this project with Racine Street.
Oh, good. Thank you very much, Adam.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the new L90H wheel loader from Airing Equipment for a new cost of $169,450 using planned equipment replacement funds in advance of 2020.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion for the change order of MMC Incorporated Contract Unit Number 2019-04, new street construction and reconstruction in various locations. The addition of $42,548.25, change order number 1.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item 8 is the preliminary plat review. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the preliminary plat review for the third addition to Woodland Hills as outlined.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Grotty. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
I have a couple of questions for Sam. First one is, I don't have it in front of me, but there was $35,000 that was allocated for, was it storm sewers or something from a TIF?
So for clarification, this is the Woodland Hills, the third addition of Woodland Hills?
So this isn't the, what I'm talking about?
Nope. So that is later on in the agenda, the development agreement.
Okay, when that comes up, I want to discuss that.
Certainly.
Okay, then my second one, thank you, James. The second one was the waiver of the sidewalk. Could you explain how that came about? I mean, there's a lot of history with this particular developer, not being completely honest, as far as I'm concerned, with the property owners in the past of other developments. And so when this came up, it kind of put a red flag up for me, so can you...
Yeah, certainly. So on the preliminary plat that was submitted, under the notes, it did note, "A sidewalk waiver is hereby requested for all the streets in the subdivision per ordinance 024-89." Sorry, I, it crossed out. But basically, what we had done is to state that note should be removed from the preliminary plat and actually taken off an official document to make sure it's known that sidewalks can be placed in the future.
I don't like that.
We wouldn't be putting sidewalks in currently now with the project, because there aren't any sidewalks out there currently.
That's our problem. That's our problem. Appleton, Kakona, Kimberly, everybody, even Harrison now. The Village of Harrison is putting in the sidewalks before the development, before a house gets built. And that's why a sidewalk never appears, because later on, people bought themselves a house and they're saying, well, we don't want to pay the extra dollars. So if they want to build a house out there, they should have those sidewalks first. I'm not going to vote for this tonight. I think unless we put back in that provision and that we actually make it a requirement of the developers, that they put the sidewalks in as part of this development.
And just, so just so you're aware, so this, this was actually that motion or the recommendation from Plan Commission was to remove the note that sidewalks would be waived. So therefore allowing sidewalks in the future. If it's a council's direction that sidewalks shall be put in, that would be an amendment to this, to this preliminary plat, that that should be done right away. And then there would be a development agreement at a later date with the final plat that we can come back and make sure. It's, it's very well noted that that should be placed in right away.
That's going to be my position for now on, so we don't go through this all the time. Any new developments, sidewalks, they don't want to develop, fine. Because we give every incentive in the world to these developers. We provide the, I got sickly pale, stuck in my head, and that's not what it is. I don't know why that came up. But we provide deferred assessments and we provide a longer time period for, for developers to pay back and, and no one else does that. And we're in a, we were actually in a housing boom and we're providing all these incentives. And I just think it's not fair to the taxpayers. I think developers should pick up these costs. It's enough of these give-outs.
So I just wanted to ask Director Alex a quick question. So typically, how, how we do streets is that the, we defer the initial infrastructure, so the subgrade, the utilities, and then a temporary layer of asphalt. So the final street is actually not put in for...
I realize the street.
Up to about five years.
I'm talking to sidewalks.
And at that, at that point, curb, if we wanted sidewalks, everything else would be put in and assessed at that time.
That's a mistake.
But...
It should be done when the development goes in. I think we need to change our policy here, because we're going to have the same situations where when that comes up and we decide we want to do this type of thing out there, they're all going to be up here saying, we don't want it, because we can't afford it now because we have house payments.
Yep. And so I guess my, my question to Director Alex again was, would it be feasible to put in sidewalks with the temporary layer of asphalt?
Yeah.
And he said because grades would not be established yet, it likely wouldn't be. So we would kind of have to re-change how we would work that...
You know, we could run into issues, I guess, with the sidewalk without having that curb and gutter in there. So I'm not saying that it isn't doable.
Okay.
But we can certainly...
I think we need to change our direction in this community. Why are we doing things backwards? You know, this is obviously going to be an area that's developed. And we, I think we, we bend over backwards to help the developers and, and that's a good working relationship we have. But I mean, we're going way beyond. And you go out to, go out to Kakona in their areas, they put the sidewalks in, they put the cement streets in, just like Appleton. They're all putting in cement now. And all we do is, you know, we put a, a layer of blacktop down. Well, this is about policy, so that's the direction I think we need to take. If anyone opposes of what I'm saying, let me hear you now. But I'm telling you, we should, shouldn't be doing this backwards, so. I understand that, but how we're doing it isn't, doesn't matter whether we waived them or, thank you, Mayor. It doesn't matter if we waived them or not, they're just not going to be there if we don't do it, first of all. So I know Mark and I have dealt with this, James has dealt with this, Steve has dealt with this. We even, all of us had to deal with it not so long ago, you know? But it, I'm telling you, you haven't been here when you got 50 people showing up and they don't want anything.
So my recommendation on that would be to make sure it's clarified within the development agreement, that sidewalks shall be installed. If it's at the time of curb or curb and gutter, and then it has to be...
And as long as he agrees to it, because I'm going to tell you this, we did that before. We were going to put a trail in.
Yeah.
And then he came up here acting like, with all the people there, oh, no, no, that we never agreed to. I have the document in front of me. You signed it, you agreed to that. Now you're saying there was never going to be a trail in that area and no trail got put in? So I think we have to do it ahead of time. That's just my personal feeling from all the years that I've been here.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Is that a motion? I'll second it.
No.
I agree 100% with what Alderman Sevenek's saying. And let me give you a little background, how this has happened. It slowly crept in ever since the city... this has happened. It slowly crept in ever since the city expanded beyond Oneida Street to the east, put in Southfield, and get put sidewalks in, and a part of it has it. And it slowly crept into these subdivisions. And now you go out in this area, all the way out to Lake Park, it's becoming a busy community out there. The city is expanding in subdivision after subdivision. And the city has a sidewalk policy and exactly what Alderman Sevanik said. Now you get to the point where you put the street in and people show up, we don't want sidewalks, okay? We've put in, City Manashia has put in, and credit to the mayor because he's pushed it, an extensive trail system in our community. And, but to get to the trail, you should have a safe way to get to the trail or getting off the trail throughout these neighborhoods. And sidewalks are the way. And what happens is, get a group of three, four, five ladies show up and they want signs for.
Children.
For children. Children at Play signs they want. And Director Radke showed us in his manual where that's a false sense of security by putting Children at Play signs up. And generally, it's on a cul-de-sac or on, you know, these new subdivisions that loop around, and it's their own neighbors that are speeding up and down these streets. So we've heard it over and over. And the climate was slowly not to have sidewalks, but it's time where we need to back up on this. And when the curb and gutter goes in, let's get the sidewalks in. And I agree that these subdivisions, first time around, people want concrete. We've had people up here that has swept their driveway and their garage floor and brought an envelope full of blacktop to this council and dumped them out in front of us and said, "We don't want this blacktop in our house, in our garages." So I looked at out near Southfield, I think it's called Purple Sage or something out there. Take a look around about there. That street is in really tough shape because it's blacktop. And we need to change our policy here. With the homeowners paying the first time around, we need to go to concrete out there. Those streets are done for 50 years and we don't have to go back. Now we're out there already in Southfield, Purple Sage, and repairing those streets already. And these are new subdivisions. So I would like to, as Alderman Sevanik said, let's have a policy change here and let's take a different direction on these things. Thank you.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Alderman Sevanik asked if anybody opposes or would like to say maybe not have sidewalks. That'd probably be me. Sidewalks, I don't know if they're a thing of the past or whatever it is, but in these new developments in these areas, I don't, they don't think they want to have sidewalks unless it's a path to a school or other expenses. So this is a good debate. I mean, I wouldn't mind hashing out the pros and cons of the sidewalk type issue that we do have here. But, you know, just for the record, you know, I'm not opposed to, I kind of like the idea that there's a sidewalk waiver in this clause. So I'll just leave it at that.
You're anti-walking, huh?
Yeah. Well, you look now, you ride down the streets in Manasha, Ida, John, Third, Fourth, we're repairing all these sidewalks, all these older developments, the sidewalks are given repaired, you know, at an expense. So at what time do you maybe pull the people of that division or area? I know that's Alderman Rappella's district. And I know a lot of those people don't want sidewalks out there. It's more maintenance and other things they have to worry about. So that's just my feeling. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
So I just want to clarify this one time because it was discussed at Plan Commission enough that at Plan Commission, I did pull out the ordinance and actually read it word for word. So I want to do that here just to make sure it is clarified that, so the common council shall have the option of not requiring the construction of sidewalks within street right of ways in cases where it determines after consultant consultation with the Plan Commission and city engineer that sidewalks are not necessary because of low-density land use and low pedestrian volumes or access to school and bus routes, or for continuity of existing sidewalks or bicycle route systems, or because of lack of cul-de-sacs or loop street patterns. So again, when we, the Plan Commission had looked at this subdivision extending off previous subdivisions that did not require it, I think that was what took into account with waiving the sidewalks at this time. However, they did not want to waive it permanently, and that's why that condition's on there, to remove that clause from the actual document. But I understand where you're coming from, so I will take the direction however it goes. And I think the, probably the proper place to do that would be within the development agreement to assure that it is put in.
Alderman Sevanik?
Just really quickly, the other reason I bring up the sidewalk issue here is because we're talking about a future trail. And if we're going to have a trail, I don't want people walking in the street to get to the trail. It's inappropriate. And that's what we're seeing. And I can tell you, I do go in your neighborhoods and I see people with their baby strollers walking in the street. I see kids playing in the street. We had a woman here that said, "I don't want sidewalks," and now, what did she do? She talked about how her kids play in the street all the time. So I mean, to me, it's also a safety issue. And if we didn't have a trail or something, you know, you're looking to spend another almost $300,000 on another trail out in that area. Well, forget it if you don't want to have any sidewalks. So.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to approve with the conditions recommended by the Plan Commission. Did you want to change any of those conditions, Stan, or?
No.
Okay.
I think what Sam said is appropriate.
Okay. Okay, so seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for October 10th through 17th. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of October 10th through October 17th in the amount of $566,603.25.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 through 2019 through 2021 licensing period as listed under approved in the City Clerk's memo dated October 17th, 2019.
Second.
So motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
If there's no objections, I'm going to skip down to four because we do have someone in the audience for that item. And I think item three might be a long discussion. So it might be two, but at least they don't have to listen to both. If there's no objections, do we have a motion for item four, which is the release of escrow funds? Or would someone like a, does someone have questions? Alderman Nichols?
I'll at least get a motion on the floor.
Okay.
All right. I move to approve the release of the escrow funds for asbestos abatement at Simply Incredible Foods.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. Alderman Kruger?
Are the taxes paid?
So I did speak with Mrs. Sones on Friday, and she did make a payment of $3,000 of the $8,000. If you'd like, I think she has some news regarding the rest, but I would have to let her speak to that as well.
It's just that we made the agreement that taxes had to be paid in full before we do this anymore because we're going through this left and right. And every time this comes before us, there's not taxes paid and nothing else has been exactly completed in the agreement from to begin with. I mean, it's, I mean, if there's still taxes owed, I'm not for this. Taxes need to be paid, in my opinion. So right off the bat, just because of that, I won't be voting for this.
Alderman Sevanik?
I would like to give Chris an opportunity to speak, but the motion was that at least the 2017 taxes be paid, which I hope would be done. And I thought that would be fair because the last time around, I looked around the room, I could tell that it wasn't going to fly last time because the council had some reservations about the taxes not being paid. So this was, to me, this was a compromise motion that I made so that Chris could get these funds. And that was, hey, at least pay your 2017 taxes. And an attempt was made, partial, but I'm not sure if the whole, the last time I checked, they weren't completely paid. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Ms. Sones, would you care to make a comment?
I can get you up to the microphone. I did hear that we were supposed to have the 2017 taxes paid. We paid $3,000 of it. I should have the balance of it paid probably within 30, 45 days. I have the money in receivables. As soon as it comes in, it'll get paid. I don't want to stop the progress of the third boiler. And we've got the two done. We're going to start working on scrapping. Now that we've got two, it's a bigger project and working with contractors to scrap the two that are done, to bring in additional funds to put in there. This money's coming out of my personal funds. It is coming out of a house I sold. And so these funds are all personal funds that I've put in to continue the asbestos. Plus, you still have liens on all my property. So, you know, with that in place, this is the third, we have two boilers, we have this one and the fourth boiler, and then the project will be completely done. So I'm asking, they're not completely paid, but I'd like to continue with the project to keep the contractor, which is giving us, doing an excellent job, keep him going for, instead of stopping right now.
Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. I will give you the benefit of the doubt this time. I don't think you heard what I said before, is that last time around, when you got your payment, I could tell from my colleagues here, they weren't going to issue that, they weren't going to approve that. That's why I made that motion that made most of them feel more comfortable. So if they are not paid this time around, I don't think you're going to get any more cooperation whatsoever. This is like the last chance. So I will throw my support behind us this time. But if they're not paid within the next 30 to 40 days, then you've lost my confidence.
I understand.
Alderman Taylor?
Thanks, Mayor. Chris, are you still operating the business?
We are operating the business. It has slowed down. We lost a million-dollar contract because our customer's customer canceled it with them. So it just rolled downhill. We're working to replace that. We are getting new business and we are operating.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to, I understand where Alderman Sevanik is coming from, but from my point of view, we go through this quite often dealing with this piece of property. And if the taxes are going to be paid supposedly in 30 to 45 days, 30 to 45 days, could come back and get the money then as agreed to. That's the way I look at it. I'm not going to vote for paying it early.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of agree with Alderman Sevanik on this, that, you know, technically, it is kind of your money. We're just holding it until you do what we kind of want to be done to that facility. But are the 2018 and 2019, I take it, those taxes are not paid?
So the 17 is actually last year's taxes, 18 is this year's taxes.
Okay, so those are still open for the full amount, right?
Yes. So for the 2018 or the 2019 budget, those have not been paid.
Both of them, okay.
So there's two sets of taxes that are still due.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're talking about the 2017 taxes, I would just like to focus on that for a moment. Director Jacobs? Has the city received payment for the 2017 taxes that are owed on this property?
When any taxes are unpaid, as of August 20th, the county treasurer will settle up and make whole all the municipalities. And so the amount due is actually payable then to the county treasurer, not to the city. So the city does have the full amount of the taxes, of the balance that's owed, which right now is $5,342.25. That is the amount that the county is out right now, not the city of Manasha.
So the answer to my question is yes?
Yes, we have received the full amount, yes.
Okay. And knowing that information, I think we just have to be aware of the history also and keep this in context. The city has received payment for those 2017 real estate taxes. And the money that she is requesting, that is being requested, is to remove the asbestos, which at the time of this agreement was, from the council's perspective, was of top priority. The asbestos needed to be removed from the building. And that work is getting done now. And who would be the appropriate person to ask if that work is being done appropriately?
Director McKinney is behind, and I don't know if she has any more information currently or not.
Todd is providing oversight through the DNR, and there are no concerns.
Thank you. So, and we know that the work is being conducted in a professional manner. So at this point, I don't, I don't see a problem with allowing the next amount of funds to be released to address asbestos abatement.
Okay, seeing no further comments. If we could, we have a motion on the floor, right? If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call seven one.
So Chris, if you want to get in touch with Director Jacobs tomorrow, he can get that check made out to your contractor then. Do you want, we don't need to go through you, Pam, do we?
No, that's fine.
You can just contact Director Jacobs. And if you can't find him, contact Pam, and she'll send you in the right direction. Hey, thanks for coming tonight. Now we'll go back to item three, the development agreement between the City of Manasha and Van's Realty. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
I'll put that motion on the table again. Move for the approval of the development agreement between the City of Manasha and Van's Realty and Construction for the second addition to Southfield.
Is there a second? Here's a motion and a second by Alderman Rappella. End discussion. Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so part two. Back to the $35,000 that I was talking about from the TIF. You just want to explain that to us first before I throw in an opinion, and then maybe I won't?
Yeah, certainly. So this subdivision, due to the grades of the existing utilities surrounding the property, is required to extend sanitary sewer from Nature's Way, which is roughly 1,000 feet to the west. So again, this is along the north side of the conservancy. This concept was brought forward in 2012. And whereas the Board of Public Works, City Plan Commission, and City Common Council did approve conceptually the plan, as well as to approve the deferred assessment policy in the amount of $325 and approximately $33,000 for the extension of the sanitary sewer to be paid for out of TIF nine. So again, that was noted as approximately. We did, through budget, I believe, two years ago because this. We did, through budget, I believe, two years ago, because this subdivision has been in the works for the last couple of years, increase that amount to 35,000, as we had anticipated that to be the final cost with that subdivision. So this sanitary extension will service these new 16 lots, as well as we are installing this and designing this deep enough to continue to the east should future development happen south of the Appleton Water Plant. So again, this does serve other development property out there. And through the longer extension than typical is the reason, I believe, that it was originally looked at as taking out of TIF 9. And I did note in the memo, the actual costs did come in much higher, I believe, in the $50,000 to $60,000 range. But because it was already previously budgeted and previously approved, that's what staff had suggested bringing forward within the development agreement tonight.
Is this, would this be basically 35,000 less than what the developer would have to pay to have those lines put out there?
Yes. So again, the budgeted estimate amount out there for that extension is roughly 52,000. And we're looking at paying 35,000 out of TIF 9 to make that extension as previously.
But this extension could potentially provide service to the possible future lots out that way, that we are still in negotiations with?
Yes, exactly. So the grassy meadows laying to the north, that sanitary sewer is too shallow. So the 16 lots here cannot drain north to that. In addition to any future development, which staff has, you know, looked at a little bit and estimates to be roughly between 25 to 40 lots in that area would be designed and pushed back through the system.
Now, the only reason I know this is because Sam and I had some meetings, and we talked about different things in that. I think that this future stuff should be presented to this entire body so they get an idea. Because that way, this is a no-brainer to me, to do this. But without those, without really seeing it on a map, I know I tried to explain it to another council member, and, you know, it's hard to do without actually physically seeing that. So, but we'll get off of that.
Well, just very quickly, so conceptually, this subdivision does get us to the west boundary line of the Appleton Water Plant property, as well as the Woodland Hills subdivision to the east gets us to the eastern property, the Appleton Water Plant property. So again, this is the two connections that butt into that site. It is roughly a vacant 30, 40-acre piece at the moment. You know, strategically, staff has been looking at, okay, is there a possibility for the City of Manasha to work with the City of Appleton to extend future lots in there and extend the streets through? That's kind of very much in the preliminary stages, but that is kind of where that is at right now.
Okay. And I'd like that to be shared with this whole body in some way, mayor, if possible, you know? Okay, thank you. Let's talk about the trail. I mean, this is kind of an interesting area. Oh, Brian's here today. So, you know, we just had this conversation about sidewalks, and here we're looking at the possibility of, where's my dollar figure, $280,000 possible trail?
Yeah, let me start by saying that 280 does include a pretty healthy contingency plan there. We-
And can you also explain how we're going about doing it, too, with Vans?
Sure, sure. So this is going to be actually done by Vans. Vans will be getting the estimates, the quotes, if you will, for this project, and they will be doing it sort of in concert with the sanitary line that's going in there. You know, the contractors will be in there, let's just, you know, get it done at one time, is sort of the concept there. So, yeah, the 280 is, it's on the high side. We, you know, what we do not want to do is come back to the council and say, hey, we're $30,000 short or whatever. So that-
Right, because that is built into this agreement, by the way, so the rest of the council understands that. Because the last trail we did came in, in my opinion, quite high, very high for what we paid.
Yeah, well, I just want to point out, we did have $400,000 in the TIF 9 budget, so technically, I guess you could say it's under that number. So I think it's an important trail. I mean, we just got done building the Province Terrace Trail, and this is another, you know, 1,500-foot section of trail that we weren't frankly sure that we could get a start on this year. But now, you know, all the things are seeming to fall into place here, so.
Maybe I can touch a little bit. I think you kind of alleviated to the financing, the TIF 9 side of that.
Yep.
So tax increment, District Number 9, the expenditure period on that ends November 15th.
What's today's date?
Today's date is October 21st.
Oh, goodness. We have a council meeting to make a decision.
So it is, it is one of those projects that is, very much has been discussed and looked at. And I believe, Brian, you know, the Province Terrace Trail obviously was also paid for out of TIF 9. And I, we had looked at this as a key corridor, you know, with the incorporations of surrounding townships, to actually be that future connection from our east to our west. So if you look at, you had mentioned it earlier with trails, so the Woodland Hills or the Hagan subdivision, that entire southern right-of-way line does have a future trail reserved for it. We made sure that was in this additional phase that was previously approved with the preliminary plat tonight. So again, this trail would set aside that future connection. So through TIF 9, again, all expenses must be paid for by that date, November 15th, 2019. The TIF does not close for another five years, I believe, but expenditures do need to be paid out by that date. Through TIF law, it is permitted to, where there is an agreement, that the monies can be escrowed. So that is what is in front of the development agreement today, is to actually look at setting that money aside, working with Vans as they bid the project, and make sure we go through the trail system, through the Parks Board, to make sure they have had a thorough look at that project. I believe you guys are also working on the court plan. And to make sure that is money worthwhile and worth spent. However, unfortunately, we are up against that timeline. So again, this would be looking at putting that money aside, because if it's not, if it's not spent soon or set aside soon through an agreement and through the escrow funds, it won't be there anymore. And then it will follow the normal TIF process, where that TIF will eventually close, and the funds will be excess funds.
And how about the lots that we were talking beyond that earlier, like the 18 or 20 lots from the Appleton Water Plant area? Why could we not use some of those funds to support that?
So the, when a TIF is created, obviously, there's a project plan that is attached to that. That a project plan is a general idea of where the funds would be expended and how that would be expended. So within that project plan, these, the Province Terrace, as well as this east-west trail connection is called out for within the project plan, as well as Amendment Number One to that, to that plan. So again, that, those funds were already called out for in that project plan. The reason we couldn't go and spend money, you know, for property acquisition or outside of that boundary, that district, is because it has not been previously approved. So at this time, if we were to look at doing that, we would have to fully go to Joint Review Board with Kelly Mac County, the school district, get their approval for a project plan amendment. Then we would need to fully get into a cooperation, multiple agreements between this common council with the Manasha, as well as the common council with the City of Appleton.
How come we didn't do that six months ago, or eight months ago, or whatever? Because, you know, I know we've been talking about this, these, well, I know the mayor and I have been talking about working out an agreement with Appleton for some time now with even a possible pilot program, but then it turned into more of all this.
And oftentimes, it takes years, as I'm sure you are all very well aware of, years for plans and planning and things of that nature to come about. The discussions with Appleton are probably not to that point yet. And if they are to that point, it has not, it was not six months ago.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. On that trail, will that trail be lighted?
No, we have not planned for any lighting on it.
The Nature's Way Trail is all lighted, right?
Yes, it is.
So why, if we want people to use these trails out there, and it's kind of the connection to the neighborhoods, why wouldn't we be lighting these?
So Alderman Repella is aware of this. We have had some discussion with some of the neighbors back there, trying to be sensitive to some of their needs for the trail. And it just felt like the conservancy really doesn't have any lights in it right now, and this is extending into that property, which is a good thing. Just felt like at this point in time, lights probably weren't needed.
Could we find out a number on the lights and what that would cost? I mean, you know, here we're a progressive city, we're going out to our far eastern boundary, and, you know, something happens out there, and then you're saying, why isn't there lights, you know? And if we want to live with these trails, and, you know, we get short daylight hours now, next week or whatever, it'll be 4:30, it'll be dark out, and we want kids to use these. And I don't know why we wouldn't be lighting that. And being sensitive to the neighbors, if you look on the Lupta Lake Trail, they used four-foot-high bollards to light the trail, and then, you know, you don't have anything. You know, just being sensitive to a few neighbors, I like that. But by using a shadow box type of lighting, or bollards, or something different, I think it works, especially for public safety. If we're going to get in, we are in this business, and again, hats off to Mayor for pushing all these trails. But I really think we're shortsighted for not putting in the power for these trails, at least stopping that end. But I just think that's very shortsighted. I would like to know what it would cost and how many lights it would take. And, you know, when we go through these, I appreciate the map on the other things, but for the public at home here, you know, we should have these graphics up here. And, you know, Stan's talking about the Appleton Water Plant and something we might be doing with them. And, you know, we should have a good feel for exactly where they are, and show the people that are paying for this, and the community watching this on TV, we should have the graphics up here. So I appreciate the graphics on the Woodland Hills, the third addition. I mean, that's, that's really nice stuff. And we should have that, and this should be able to be projected up here for the public to watch, too. So I hope we use that technology for the people. And I would like to have Director Tankey put together what it would cost to light this trail, and how many feet it is, and how many lights it is. Of course, being sensitive to the neighborhood, too. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, add a little bit of a length to this conversation. So two things to note, item 12. We did want to add, the cost of infrastructure will not exceed the price to which the city would have been paid had it installed the infrastructure itself. That is just a standard clause that I personally missed when I had put that in. The second thing, as Alderman Sevigny had alleviated to item number nine, I think you had stated that a previous developer was not upfront with future assessments. So that would be where we could add, must notify each owner in writing prior to the purchase of the future assessment, as well as we did not include sidewalks with this one, again, because of the existing development. But we would have that trail designed coming up and then budding up to the street. But I just wanted to make sure that was very well aware with previous conversations.
Alderman Sevigny?
Well, the reason I didn't make it an issue this time was because you either have a trail or you have sidewalks. And the trail, I think, serves the purpose in that area, so, and then leads into those other neighborhoods that don't have either a trail or a sidewalk, which at the time, I'll be upfront, I voted opposed to putting in those sidewalks at the time because of what you just said, they don't go anywhere. But I did make a statement saying, once we connect, which we're proposing to do, then I think either a trail or sidewalk should be put in, because it finishes the entire loop that, for this trail system. Otherwise, if we have a gap or whatever, there's no purpose of even having it at all.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, a really quick question, maybe I'm missing in this. Is the trail required to go in before any actual home development goes in? Is that going to be part of the infrastructure itself? Or is that going to be allowed for Vans to hold off until after he starts developing the area with homes?
We did not, I'm trying to recall and kind of skim through this document, I don't think there's a specific date on that. But we would expect it to go in with the sanitary line, because they will already be back in there doing their work. So again, if it's, if it's something that we would want to add, construction certain date, too, we could certainly do that. This is, this could be good winter work because of the soil conditions back there, so it's potentially either this winter or the following winter. So if there was a date, just throwing it out there at the top of my head, I would probably say spring of 2021.
Okay. I'm actually going, in a second, I'm going to make that motion. And then the reason why I'm going to do that is because backing off of what Alderman Sevigny has said in the past, is that we did have another developer where the trail was supposed to go in. It was, the agreement was going after the homes, and homes are all built, and then we tried to get the trail in there, and that all fell apart really quick. So spring of, what year? Okay, I'll make the amendment to this, to include that the trail must be constructed by spring of 2021.
There's a motion, a second. Want to go to Stan?
I thought you said sidewalk.
Discussion on the amendment to require the trail to be installed by spring of 2021? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for the amendment. So now we have the motion as amended in front of us. Did you need to add something to that, too, then? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. You mentioned before something about number 12. And my question is, is there something that needs to be added there? You kind of skimmed over it.
Yeah, and maybe the attorney can justify this. But I would say if the motion was to approve with the added, understanding of the two recommendations.
I don't-
So it's, the cost of infrastructure will not exceed the price which the city would have paid had it installed the infrastructure itself. So that is standard language that is typically in these development agreements that I had just overlooked. And then the second, if you're looking for it, was the developer must notify each owner in writing prior to the purchase of the future assessment.
And where would that be added?
Following, or at the end of paragraph nine.
And the first one you mentioned would be added in paragraph 12? I didn't write that all down, but I would like to make those two amendments.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, from Alderman- Some motion, a second, from Alderman Sevigny. Did you get what needs to be added, then, Debbie? Any discussion on those two amendments? Did you have anything else, Becky, on that? No?
No, I just had one little thing.
That's fine, let's vote on those, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So now we're back to motion as amended. Go ahead.
I just had one little thing, and it doesn't need a motion, but in paragraph eleven, towards the end of the second line, those letters are capitalized in bid, and that threw me off. So could they be lowercase if the bids for this portion of the project? I had to think about that, so I don't want anyone to be confused in the future. Thank you.
So is there any other discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please. On this?
Oh, okay, as amended.
Yes.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance twenty-four. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for ordinance oh twenty-four nineteen. Ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter Two of the Code of Ordnances related to fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquor and operating, operator's license, introduced by the mayor.
There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Nichols. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item two is resolution twenty-two. Is there a motion? Alderman Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve Resolution R dash twenty-two dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing the city of Manasha to accept funding from the Federal Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, STBG, to the Appleton Foxies Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, for the partial funding of the construction of Racine Street, and further approving the application which obligates the city to matching funds for the construction of said project.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Travis? No comments? Item O is recess to committees. Do we have a motion to recess? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we recess into committees.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor? We are at recess, thank you.